On roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member answering present. Now we'll tell the folks in the audience, normally we would not have our sides to you all, but since we're having some presentations today, we had needed to orient our tables a little bit differently. Mr. Murray?
Yes, I'm present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Present.
Mr. Kazook?
Present.
And Ms. Wicker?
Present.
If you know it's gonna be a good meeting, Mr. Murray's already voting yes. I don't have to say that.
I don't blame you, I would've did.
The meeting agenda is provided for your review, of course, this is a special call
meeting, so nothing can be added to it, and I have nothing to remove, so there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption agenda.
I'll second that. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Public comments, anyone want to say something before we get started?
I do want to note, Ms. Wicker, we had our first responders meeting yesterday, led by Mr. Jackie Greider, and we had just a good roomful of people, so I want to publicly thank our first responders, everybody from the rescue squad, the law enforcement, to our emergency management, EMTs, constables, just everybody, and our principals, and Ms. Dameron, and our mental health therapist, and Jackie's leading it, but I thought it was a good meeting, Jackie and I've talked afterwards, and we just really appreciate the community support with that, it was a very productive meeting.
Anyone else? Discussion with possible action. Roof replacement authorization of BG1's Central Office, Old Area Technology Center, NJLTC, and Alternative School Buildings.
So Mr. Brent Williams is here with us, he's architectural director with Insulated Roofing Contractors, he's gonna present roof proposals for the central office, and Ms. Wicker said our Old Area Technology Center, and the NJLTC and Alternative School Buildings. Brent, Mr. Williams will probably mention this too, but they are on the state price contract list with KDC, we can use, because it's a roof project, we can use our ESSER funds for these projects, so with no impact to our general fund, and no impact to our bonding capacity, and like I've already told him, I've checked him out pretty much, from one end of the state to the other, a lot of the school districts that he works with, and his company works with, have nothing but positive things to say about his company, the company he works with, and you're a repeat customer to many of those districts, aren't you, Mr. Williams? So, we appreciate you being here with us, and look forward to presentation today.
Thanks, appreciate the introduction, my name is Brent Williams again, the superintendent asking you to do is spend a few minutes, tell you a little bit about our company, and the types of projects that we work on, and then share with you some photos of the three projects. So, just to start off, we've been in business since 1974, we're located in Louisville area, we just built a new facility in 2006, and have been there, we have approximately 170 workers at our office, we do projects all over the country, but mostly midwestern and southeastern parts, we've completed over 150 million square feet of roofing, and over the years, with Department of Education, we've done over 400 school projects. So just wanted to share a couple of those projects with you, just to give you an idea of the types of things that we work on, so if you remember the Henryville tornado that went through a few years ago, we were selected to do the roof demo replacement on that, and that was a tricky project, because that tornado happened right before summer break, and so the entire school had to put together back for school later that year, and so we were working 24 hours a day on that project to get that school back up and running. Like the superintendent mission, we do quite a few projects around the state, right now we're doing about $6.5 million worth of roofing, the Golden County re-roofing, they're doing middle school and two high schools right now. This is a project we did in Winchester, this is a re-roof project. Just wanted to give you guys a variety of roofs to look at here, and show the different types of conditions that we've come across. This is an interesting project, this was a project we worked on for the administrative office of course for the state of Kentucky, it's actually in Old Palm Depot, but they turned it into the headquarters for the administrative office of course, and so this project was completed a few years ago, it was a overlay where it existed previously. Here's one of our projects in Golden County, we just recently finished this year. This one literally finished about 30 days ago, this is the Woodland County Middle School. This is a 100,000 square foot new construction, existing re-roofing, Southern High School. Actually, the back, kind of middle section there, you can see we're actually working there, in this area of the state. We've done quite a few projects for Hart County, we did about $2.5 million for them, last year, re-roofing five elementary schools for them, teenagers, Coverland, Donnyville, Memorial. This is a new construction project, Green Valley Elementary, 65,000 square foot. Slate Run Elementary. This is a downtown project we did, Franklin Street School. Golden County School. We do quite a few projects for Mead County, we're working on two projects currently, and just this one we finished a couple of years ago, this was addition, major addition renovation, at their Paintville Elementary. And I throw this in there, just to give you guys, you know, we do work not only for schools, but large corporate customers, and so this is, we've got all roofing at General Electric Appliance Park in Louisville, which is about 6.3 million square feet, you can see us working the top roof there, that top building, just to give you a sense of scale, is 47 acres, this front building is 47 acres. So we were there for a little bit. Here's one of the buildings, this is about $850 square feet. We also do work in universities, and we've done probably about six or seven projects of forehead. And we do, sorry if there aren't any UK fans in here, well, please, it's a UK friendly audience, we're quite a good, quite a good working UK. This is the UK Kim Physics, which is under construction right now, it's a major addition renovation project, and then we've done the College of Law, College of Business, Plane Sciences, ag buildings, so almost every roof you see in this picture, we've done. And you've seen the white roof of the Superdome, that's also a project we've done, so we're trying to move that roof off, and we've been down and redecked the Superdome, and reinstalled the roof. So that being said, I keep this sliding in here, just so you know, we do try to incorporate as much technology into the types of roofing projects we do, so we do obviously utilize drone footage, we have drones with infrared cameras on them, and so a lot of times when owners want to know, hey, what kind of, you know, what kind of shape should I roof in, we can fly drones overhead and just pick out areas where there might be any repairs, or moisture, saturation of roofs, and we try to incorporate as much technology as we can. Superintendent mentioned, one thing that makes us unique, is we actually are a member of the Kentucky Purchasing Department, and so our roofing systems utilize a catalog, and if you're not familiar, I just cut this page out, it's kind of hard, because it's small, basically, you've got line items 1 through 200, and you have a description of the line item, and you have a unit measurement of square foot, or square roofing, and then a price, and so basically what we do is, we go, we do a field inspection, we take cores and measurements, and then we develop basically a breakdown catalog of this type of roof system, this much square footage, and this cost, and now all of that's been bid out, and so all of these numbers have been bid, that's how we're allowed to be a part of the state price contract, and so it is actually a bid we had to complete in order to get this. In addition, we kind of like to think of ourselves as a one-stop shop, so instead of having to contact another architect, or a CEM, or a GC, you can come directly to us, because I am a licensed architect, so I can fulfill all of the detailed drawing requirements that the state may need in order to facilitate the project, so we do all that stuff in-house, and I do that at no additional cost, so it's typically, you might have a 7, 8, 9% fee on top of a project, an architect can do that, but I've, since we do so many of these, like I said, we've done hundreds with Department of Education, we do that, we don't pass that cost on you.
Yeah, and Mr. Williams is very familiar with consultants at KDE, I was having, when he and Mr. Thomas and I met, I had some questions that I said, well, I'll need to get with my, you know, consultant at KDE, and he knew Mr. Highland very well, and actually reached out for me, and sent me the email, and got those questions answered, so that's, that part of all that paperwork behind the scenes, especially from my perspective, because I'm stuck doing it, is very important too, that they're so familiar with the whole BG1 backpack process, and et cetera, et cetera.
Unfortunately, there are a lot of nuances to navigating that system, and they're very familiar with our company and our process, and so we knock on wood have not had any issues getting any of our projects approved or streamlined, typically, we can get these projects approved in less than a few weeks, so.
And you told me probably, well, I might misquote you here, 75, 80% of your projects right now are with ESSER funds?
Yes, the majority, I mean, since ESSER came out, and they allowed roofing projects to go through the ESSER money, almost all school districts are spending that money on roofing or HVAC projects, and so, and sometimes it's a combination, a combination of the two, but all the projects that I showed you at Golden County, those are all ESSER projects, we're doing $2.5 million for Golden County, it's getting ready to start here soon, that's all ESSER funding with Adam Hoover, but yes, that's obviously a very popular charter. And so I've got a few slides here, just to talk generally about the scope for work, so the first project we looked at was the board office, I've got a few pictures here to kind of help, help show the condition of the roof.
Ms. Reed is in the office room too, she'll provide testimony, she leaves her room, and puts a bag on her computer. That, Ms. Reed, is that not the truth?
It is.
That's how bad a roof is at the office, I want you all to understand, that's how.
Do you know how to turn too many corners to find a bucket or trash?
No.
That's out of place, that's a pool of water, so we met, we met over here, and took some samples of the roofing, so basically, you have, you know, a built-up roof on the low slope section there, an asphalt shegel roof at the sides, you've got metal panels along the top of the perimeter there, and you've got a rubber roof on top, so you've got one, two, three, four different materials. So, our plan is, is to tear off the built-up roof, tear off the shegels, tear off the metal panels, so that all of that, all of that material there would be new, versus just leaving the metal panels or maybe anything, so everything would be new. The top of the roof, we did the, for the top of the roof, the EPDM roof, it was saturated with water, and so there is quite a bit of water just sitting up there in the insulation on that top roof, and you can see, there's not much slope there right now, the seams are beginning to pop up and wear out along the edges there, and so, you know, this particular roof doesn't have probably too much time left on it. Just to, just to kind of reiterate, in addition to the re-roof, we would also be replacing the sheet metal for the perimeter, so new gutters, new wraps, new wall panels across the top, so that when you look at the roof, you would see all the roof. In terms of warranty, because we were part of the KDC, and we have to use the KDC process, we do offer 20-year non-pro rated material and labor warranty, so here, 19 and 3/4, if you have a problem, all the costs associated with rectifying that are on, are on us, you don't have any out-of-pocket expenses, like if we have to make a trip down here to check a leak for you, or if we have to make repair for you, there's no cost through that, that full 20 years, and again, it's non-pro rated, so, like I said, everything is covered from leak-free warranty, and the warranties that we issue are backed by two people, are backed by us, and also backed by the manufacturer, manufacturers that we use, the largest in the country, Firestone, Carlisle, John Mansville, so God forbid, if something happens to us, you still have a Fortune 500 company backing your roof warranty, it's not just a piece of paper, but I'm issuing you, or, you know, a small material supplier, so you have some confidence, knowing that that piece of paper is going to protect you for 20 years. Now, the next project we looked at was the Lake Cumberland Technology Center, so this project is a little, little unique, because you've got, you've got two roof systems here, you've got a built-up roof, as you can see, black area towards the right there, and up top, you have, we have a metal roof, and so, again, you can begin to see that this roof is drying out, the seams are cracking, there's been quite a few attempts at repairing the edges, to try to stop water from coming in the building, and it's kind of at the point now, where there's not a whole lot more you can do to extend the life of it. So, our plan on this building, some of the last, would be to install a new roof over the top of this area, put on new face wraps, new gutters, and then a metal roof, apply new roofing to this area, and also include gutters and downspouts on it. So, on the metal roof, you can see, even though it's been coated, you can see areas where it's been worn off, you're going to see oxidation and rust starts forming on the roof panel, and also on the right there, you can see the gutter has, has quite a bit of rust on it. So, before this roof gets completely deteriorated to the point where you have to replace it, we can install a roof over the top of it, to extend the life of it. And I, this is, the last project we looked at was the Alternative School there, just located at the Bondy Street there in blue, and we started looking at these roofs, and found out that we could use ESSER, and the superintendent suggested, hey, once your guys are there, why don't we look at doing this roof too, because this is kind of a multi-purpose building, it would make sense to be able to group all these together, so this project only has one type of roof on its metal roof. And you can begin to see the rib profile there, and the gutters and downspouts, so again, on this project, in addition to re-roofing the top of it, we'd be replacing the gutters and downspouts. I have, I don't know if the superintendent gave.
Mr. Kazook asked, could you tell if that was the original roof, or Mr. Thomas would probably know too?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And I've got copies of our proposals, I don't know if you included that, if that's something.
They, they have them, but if you, if you have extra copies for them to look at, I mean, they've got it on their e-meeting, but if.
These are broken down by.
It's on the e-meeting too, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Bell, would you turn the thermostat up a little bit? They're calling.
Yes, are you all calling?
Not even. Ms. Brenda, Ms. Joyce, Mr. Hoover had a comment for you.
Oh, I see.
Not some bad day, really.
I think, I think the day that we actually came over to do the inspection.
And just so you guys are, the steps that would be required is to approve the BG1, and what that will allow us to do is to prepare contracts, the unit price breakdown, certificate of insurance, support bonds, the AA contract, and so there would need to be another meeting to approve all of that, and once we have that approval, whoever think we need to work on this, and begin the process. We take care of uploading everything, so once the BG1 is created, the district creates the BG1, and past that point, we take over, make all documents submissions to the Department of Education.
Just for, your, the BG1 has to be initiated by the district, and then I select the company that we would be working with, and then they can be in the system as well. The total for all of them is $651,476. You're going to kind of mention about what type of roofing for each building you're looking at, well, I mean, on the, you're doing some of the foam, that's probably the one, talk a little bit more about that, because that's one that we're not as familiar with.
Yeah, so the, at the board office, because you kind of have an existing black roof there now, and it's somewhat visible, once you come off the hill there, we're recommending going back to the black EPDM roof there, so it will kind of, just kind of disappear, and then we would be replacing the wall panels, which we can select, select a color, we use Firestone sheet metal, so that can be open to discussion, and the opposite, the top, the top of the roof would be EPDM also. Now, the top roof, because you don't have much slope, like me, once we take that, all that material off, we would actually add tapered insulation on top to help push that water besides, so you don't continually have pumping water up there, any time that you've got water sitting on a roof, it's an opportunity for more deterioration. So on the, on the Technology Center, what we would do is, we would mechanically attach down a coverboard over the existing roof, and we would use spray polyurethane foam, so all the, all the, the majority, probably 95% of the school projects we do in Kentucky, all the ones that I showed you are spray foam, that's kind of what we're known for, and so that system, in addition to being waterproof, also adds insulation value, so depending on the warranty length, if you're looking at 20-year warranty, you spray an inch and a half of foam, you put two coats of silicone coating over the top, plus granules, the coating protects the foam. The other advantage, in addition to offering some insulation value, is that at the end of 20 years, typically, we have a roof system, you either have to cover that whole roof system up with a new roof, or you have to tear something off, the advantage of foam is, is once you get to the end of 20 years, you can power wash the roof surface, and put additional silicone down over it, so it doesn't require tear off, and so it greatly reduces the amount of luggage you would spend 20, hopefully 25, 28 years down the road, you decide to get another warranty, all you have to do is add coat.
Yeah.
And then on the metal roof, same situation, we would power wash the roof, any rust that's up there, we would, we would brush the rust off, put a rust thinner on, and we could direct, direct apply the foam to that. And I think you can get different colors on the spray foam system, but as you can see in all the pictures I showed you, almost everybody chooses light gray, because it seems to weather the most, and it weathers the best, and it blocks as much of the dirt, environmental stuff that you go lands on.
And I think our roof landscape here on this campus would look best with the gray, with the ATC and the high school, yeah.
And on, and on the sheet though, you can select what color, what colors, like 20-some different colors that you can get from, and then on the Alternative School here, same application, you direct apply, direct apply to the roof system itself, and spray. The other advantage of the spray foam system is monolithic, so where a lot of, a lot of roof systems, like this whole built-up roof, every 2.5 feet, you see a strip there, that's just an opportunity for failure, when you spray the foam down, it's continuous and monolithic, there's no seams, gaps, cracks in it, you flash around penetrations, you flash around them, there's no, there's no chance for water getting in, so we have, you know, we install built-up roofs, we install silicone-plied roofs, spray foam roofs, and by far, we have the least callbacks on our spray foam.
Well, like I said, they, the company has great references of the superintendents I've talked to, and Mrs. Carnes, Ms. Carnes reached out to some finance officers, that she knew of some districts that RRC had worked with, they're on the state bid price contract, which simplifies things for a, for a district so much easier, and we can use ESSER funds, and it's just a project of just ESSER fund, you know, of just a roof project, so we're not touching other components of these particular buildings, so, you know, I, again, the total price is 651,476, so, and that is with the federal prevailing wage, because we have to do that, because it's ESSER funds, state, federal money. So I recommend approval of the roof replacement proposals for the central office, Old Area Technology Center, the NJLTC and Alternative School Building, as presented, and authorized superintendent Ford to complete the BG1s. Do I have any other questions, or anything, we got Mr. Williams here?
And just so you know, I represent a lot of people, I'm not, I'm just one part of the team, so we have a whole group of people, so it's not just me, we've got dedicated safety directors, dedicated customer service people, dedicated production people, dedicated repair people, and so it's a much bigger, bigger operation than just me, and so you're getting all of those resources included in this.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Do I need to read all that? I'm just making a motion to that effect.
Okay.
On approval of the roof replacement proposal for the central office, the Old Area Technology Center, the RLC Alternative School Building, as presented and authorized, Mr. Ford to complete the BG1.
I'll second that, I didn't have to say this much.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, we'll be excited to get, I'll get these signed back to you, and then we can connect Mr. Williams and.
Regent or sacks away.
I'm sorry?
Regent or sacks away.
Oh, Ms. Brenda, Ms. Reed, Ms. Reed and Ms. Brenda said you can throw your sacks away here.
A little later.
Yeah, a little later.
She pulls out the red carpet, she saw us there, for sure.
Yeah, she did, didn't she? Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but I know you traveled the furthest, so.
If anybody needs to stay, just let me know, I'll hang out for a little bit.
I think you're fine, we can connect, and I'll get the proposals signed.
Do you want to call the Indiana?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to have a question for him?
Mr. Thomas has been with you two, three times, hasn't he, with the buildings?
Yeah, and I think our, our goal is, is to try to get these projects done this year, so as soon as, assuming we can get all the approvals, we can get everything rolling, our goal is to work on these projects this year, and we can, you know, if you guys have certain periods that, you know, is inconvenient versus to be here, we'll work around you, just try to make that happen.
You mean before school starts?
No, no, before the calendar year.
Before calendar year.
Yeah.
I wish.
But, you know, that would be great before winter snow, sitting on the roof, and all that stuff like that, and another.
Board members probably don't agree.
I'm sorry?
The board members first.
That would be, have to be the first one, that, yeah. Unless there's a supply structurally.
There, there could be, there could be some advantage to doing the other ones first, but we can talk about that, we're flexible.
Okay.
Right now, if you guys are familiar with the supply chain, it is, it is more difficult to get single-plies, and things like that, because manufacturers aren't able to.
We're, we're fine, we'll be happy to start on any of them, yeah.
Our goal is to get it done as soon as we can, because it's a great work, we don't want to drag out the processing.
Yeah, like I said, we need to roof on the old ATC, so we can start doing stuff inside, and working on the exterior stuff anyway, that's good.
Thanks, guys.
Well, I appreciate you being here, thank you.
Discussion with possible action, Russell Springs Elementary School, HVAC project, authorization for BG1.
Well, I previously told you all at a board meeting, we had some options to kind of retrofit and redo the existing HVAC system at Russell Springs Elementary School, and again, it is a project eligible for ESSER funds, because it's, it's air quality and all that, that building opened up during the 2000, 2001 school year, so you know, we're over 20 years old, Mr. Thomas is sitting there, and he can attest to the problems after problems, it's an old system, it doesn't have the controls, we can't monitor it like we can the other schools, we can't mon, our energy manager can't monitor it like he can the other schools. So Mr. Jeremy Ray here with Thermal Service has a proposal, it's the same company you all had authorized with, to do the dehumidification unit here in the ANC, so you're all familiar with, they're on the state price contract, but this is, this was a pretty heavy task, and so I, I'd ask Jeremy if he could come down and kind of talk with you all as to what, how it would be phased, what it would be doing, and all that stuff like that, so Jeremy, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right, appreciate it. Does everybody have a copy of the quotes?
That's on the thing.
Okay, so there's three different quotes.
Okay, so there's three different quotes.
Right.
So I brought coffee, I brought copies if anybody else needs one, so I got plenty here, so.
You all want one versus looking at it on your computer?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
And I'm gonna do it in sections, and I'll try to be quick. So I want to start with the, the water source heat pumps and the controls first, because in my opinion, I think that's what you really need to look at first over there, first, and that school has priority. So this first quote is that. Everybody need one you say? Do you have them all there? I like the hard copy myself, too.
I do, too.
Ford, you got yours?
Yeah, I got mine in the board book.
All right, so I did not bring no presentation on my computer. Now, I can show you pictures and things like that, but you're talking about a lot of photos of a lot of equipment, so I don't really want to take your whole afternoon and bore you with that. So mainly, if it's okay, I'll float around, is that all right? I got my notes here. So what you're looking at there is the water source heat pumps and the control system, quote. So as Mr. Ford said, that system was back in 2000, that's when I got into this industry. I've been with the same company for 23 years now. I'm, right now, I'm currently the president of Thermal Service. I did it all at Thermal Service, if you want to just a brief history of who I am. Started out as apprentice there, literally making $7 an hour, just getting into the trade, and it's been a blessing to me, it's been great to me. I went from there, become a journeyman, technician for over 10 years. Used to come down here and work for my favorite customer, customer, Mr. Thomas, as a technician. And, I don't know if that's, he's got a grin, I don't know if that's good or bad.
You're very, very familiar with our district, though.
Very.
He has, he has been a name around Russell County schools for a long time, you have, yeah.
Absolutely, and I hope it's a good name. So yes, I remember when that, when that was brand, when those units were brand new going in back in 2000, 2001. But again, I was a technician for 10 years, and then I got into sales. I loved the sales business, I loved dealing with customers, loved dealing with people. That led into management, they say no ownership, was owner for eight years. And I recently sold the company last year, but I'm still acting president of Thermal Service, which used to be a part of Thermal Equipment Service, and now it's just Thermal Service. So we are, we are really doing well, we got 75 technicians across the state of Kentucky. We have five sales reps across the state of Kentucky, we got inside house people, and we have three locations across the state of Kentucky with a new location down in Huntsville, Alabama, because we do, also do industrial work. We do schoolwork, hospital work, industrial work. So we ought to be in our big industrial customer, so that's why we're down in Huntsville. With all that being said, not to bore you with that, kind of get to the facts of what I'm here for. Back to that point on Russell Springs Elementary, those heat pumps are, you know, going on 13, 13 years old? No, no.
No, over 20.
Oh, what am I thinking there? I bet, it's literally, since I started, those heat pumps have been in, so the average...
He's a technician, not a math teacher.
Exactly. So you're basically my flaws here. So average lifespan on a water source heat pump is 12, 15 years. So you guys, kudos, you've done well on those water source heat pumps to maintain this long. Bad thing is those R22 units. R22, a jug of R22 right now is going for $1,400 for a 30-pound jug. That's street rate. It's not going to be what you might get charged if somebody comes out here and does the work per pound. So again, 30-pound jug, $1,400 right now, R22. R22 is going completely out, so that will only increase. It's like R11 back in the old days. All right, so 410A, of course, 407 is what you see now in refrigerants. That's going to be, 410A right now, 407 is running $500 a jug, so you can see the cost difference.
You know, I remember buying that RSW for $78 a jug, that's doing well.
Yeah.
For $78?
Yeah, $78 for a pound.
There's actually still machines out there that have...
And the toilet was, before the discontinue, he got a plum outside.
We was in Eastern, oh, I, I said, I want to get off on tangibles. I was in Eastern Kentucky not long ago, at another school district, and they had some old chillers that had the R11, RSW, and it's just, you, you don't see that much. That costs a lot of money to get there. So my point is, your, your water source heat pumps, you got 60 water source heat pumps in that building. Like I said, again, great job to the folks here, take care of it because you've made it this long with a 12, 14-year lifespan, you're 20-some years in. So with those heat pumps, refrigerant's going to be high, you gotta open it up. Any component inside a refrigeration section is going to cost you a lot of money. I'm not sure what you're running on it right now, but it's only going to continue to get worse with repairs and cost HVAC on those heat pumps. So with that being said, that's why I want to start with this. In my opinion, I think that's one of the most important things you need to look at if you're going to consider doing any work over there. Second thing is, is what is part of that quote, is the control system. I had proposed going with the carrier controls, which would be carrier water source heat pump. The really good thing about this is, it is a back-end control system, meaning it's open protocol. Meaning, I won't name any other products, but you could put, add any kind of brand of equipment to that control system. And also, anybody can work on it.
Yeah, it's not so proprietary, yeah.
Exactly. It doesn't have to just be me, and I'm going to charge you an enormous fee to come out here to work on it. You can, you can trade your local guy to work on it, anybody can work on it, open protocol, all right? Now, the industry's starting to go that way, because there's about a decade, they was, there was a lot going on where they would make it, basically, where the only one company could do it, where only one company could work on it, they kind of owned that, owned that situation. But they've gotten away from that. I'm not a believer in it, that's why I like to bid open, back-end protocol. So what will that do for you? That will give you the ability to set a real schedule on the building, right? Do all the energy saving things that you need to be doing. Right now, you're currently, all you have in there right now is, you have a lot of old time clocks, old relays, you don't necessarily have any control of that building that I know of, is that right, Scott?
I'd go ahead.
Okay.
You can go in there and turn the dials.
I showed the new principal that today, he said, "If you need to tell me, I can stay cool, but turning this dial?"
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So here, a couple of really good things on this control system, again, is that you can, it will be, every piece of equipment will be linked to that open platform. There'll be a computer right there onsite, there'll also be one in Scott's office, and then Mr. Ford can have, he can pull it up on his laptop right where he's, right where he's sitting, to look at the school if he wants to. You can also put an app on your phone to look at it from your phone and see the ups and downs, what the temperatures are in the, in the whole building throughout the, throughout the building, and see if there's any alarms and anything of that nature. You can also set it up if you want to text every time you do get alarmed. You might not want that, it might be too much, but it does offer that capability. So the controls are very, they're very user-friendly, which I like, I like to keep it simple. Very easy platform to look at, it's got graphs, it gives you all, all the readings of your water incoming, outgoing, air incoming, outgoing. It does not monitor your refrigerant pressures, all right? Meaning, like, it's not going to show you the head pressure and suction pressure, like we would probably talk, Scott. But that's not, that's, that's just a, a big extra expense. What you need to see is that entering and leaving air temperature, right? To make sure the rooms are satisfied, make sure it's getting what it should be getting. So, so really, it's a, it's a very user-friendly control system. Water source heat pumps that I proposed are, it's a very good brand with a really good warranty. Comes with a five-year, everything covered, not just compressor, every part in that water source heat pump for five years will be covered under warranty, okay? And also comes with a one-year labor warranty as well. So any labor, anything that has to be done after completion will be covered from my company on labor. But for five years, all parts, not just compressor, all parts are covered on the water source heat pumps. Okay? To stay on point with the controls and the water source heat pumps, just want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything with big bullets. If the server goes down, so every control system has a server, all right? It's like the brains of that, of that system. The good thing about this system is, every controller, the set points are programmed to that water source heat pump, meaning like this room here might have two water source heat pumps serving it. It's already got the program inputs into that board, meaning that server goes down, your building keeps running, the water source heat pumps will keep running. That's not the way that they, that they've been doing it for years now. It's usually all in the server, and then it shoots out a, an output. Not in this case, it's all in the board of the unit. Does that make sense? There is no extra licensing fees. A lot of times with a control system, you'll have to have a, they'll come out, and there'll be a fee for a license fee, there's no licensing fee for, for this control system. Again, it's open protocol, no, you won't be, you will not be hit with any kind of expended expense, you know, every year, or two years, three years. Okay?
We got another couple for school people lying right now, paying our fees for it.
Okay. Yeah, there's no, no fees, no fees associated with the control system.
And the actual wellfields, you know, there's no issues with them?
That's what, I'd ask Scott that, has there been no issues with the wellfields?
Uh-uh.
No, but is that something that, while you're doing this, that we should look into to highlight and check and make sure, everything, we've got some coming and going?
To remind the board members, that's a geothermal, Russell Springs is. So the wellfields, but we've never...
Well, here's the way you do that, there's a, you can do a test, like a pressure test on it. And I, I asked that question at the beginning before we started talking. The reason I was asking that, because you get that shift in the ground, right? And in a wellfield like that, you'll get that shift, and that's when you'll get a leak, basically, in one of the wells, one of the vaults, especially, I see this a lot in Eastern Kentucky, I'm not picking on Eastern Kentucky, but, right, the lay, the land's different out there with the mountains and things like that, they have a lot of that, and we actually have to go fix those. We, we fuse that pipe, and what happens is, it's just basically due to the, to the ground and the surface when it shifts, they'll get leaks. Doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen. You guys have never had one, I mean, knock on wood, you, you're probably not going to, going to have one. I'm not a superstitious kind of guy, so...
Not there, it's been stable. That part of the, of that project's been great, the actual wellfields.
I don't think we've ever had it, when we got there, it took a little mistake.
But that wasn't, and it, that wasn't the wellfields itself, it was the company, yeah, so...
So, that being said, you guys, you guys have, and I'm going to talk about the make-up areas in a moment, but the water source heat pumps, you've got great life out of them. The control system, I don't know if you've ever really had a control system there. The one I'm proposing is, is, like I said, user-friendly, can tie in anywhere, you can fit any other kind of equipment on it. It's going to save you energy, and you're going to save tons of repair costs going forward with these water source heat pumps. Because it's only going to, that, that maintenance repair is only going to go up, there's no way it's going to get any better. So again, that's, I wanted to touch on this quote first, because I felt like it's the most important thing you got over there right now.
We are not having to start to replace the coals.
The coax coals?
We've been replaced two, maybe three, and we're not giving it to you.
Yep, and that, and that's just due to, to being overtime, you know, the water's kind of going in and out like that. It's just, it's just showing the change.
I, I don't know, Mr. Scott, Mr. Kazook asks how many wells at, at that school, I don't know.
I was thinking they said it's either 150 or 200.
I don't know.
He was a kid.
It, it's marked off up there, and it's, they put two acres marked off, or they're just, you know, like a three-foot park.
I was thinking it's 150, 200.
Yeah, there's a lot. Of course, remember how many there are.
So, so to stay on the topic, so as far as ETA with equipment and things like that, if you guys used to go with this project, on the heat pumps, you're 15 weeks out right now. So mid-October, as of this morning, on my way down, well, before I come down, I had a meeting with the carrier, the equipment folks, just to want to get answers. So you're looking at October, is when I can get some equipment. The good thing about this building, I love it, is it's got the mezzanine, okay? Me and, me and Mr. Thomas, we located a spot to use, basically, for, we'll use an air jack to take the water source heat pumps, to pin them up on the mezzanine. And what I would do, I'd want to do this in phases, you got 60 heat pumps, we probably would do it in like, anything for 15 to 20 heat pumps at a time. And we can do this there in school, because it's on the mezzanine. The only thing would be, the, the noise would be when we mess with the sheet metal a little bit.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be that much, we could try to stage that when we do those at certain late time of the day or during lunch, when it's already loud, we could do something of that nature. So another good thing, it's a money-saving thing, you guys, is we can do this there in normal hours, because you got that nice mezzanine. If you did have mezzanines above, above ceiling, it had to be there in summer, and it would be much of a crunch job. So again, water source heat pumps, I can have mid-October, could be starting work by the end of October, first of November, and then going, going into the holiday season, which would be a good time as well, because you're going to have breaks there. So, so again, like I said, 15 weeks on water source heat pumps. It was 12 weeks, a couple weeks ago, but that's, that's bumped back a little bit. I think they gave themselves a little cushion, I think it would come in quicker if everything I've been ordering comes in a little bit faster. The control, control job piece of it, we, you guys started to go, decided to go with that. Majority of that is on the mezzanine as well, we've used the trays they got up there, very accessible. And we can do that there in normal school hours as well, and we can start on that within the next three, four weeks. And it's basically feed your whole building, they help, they're basically, they're a bonus to your water source heat pumps, right? They're bringing in outside air, they're recirculating air.
That's what's become so prevalent during COVID, they talk about that air exchange, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
You did want to?
No, okay.
Well, and since he brought that up, I'll hit on that point first, so the COVID piece of it. So your economizer, they say the ASHRAE rule is 15 CFM per student. So 30 students in a class, I'm not sure what you guys run here per class, but it should be 15 CFM per child is what should be coming from that economizer and that make-up air unit, beating the hallways, cafeterias, classrooms, something of that nature. That's just kind of a working ASHRAE standard, is what they say. I've worked all over the state of Kentucky, and I, and I honest to goodness, I think I've been in almost every school. And there's never really, I've never seen a hard rule of thumb on how that's done. Biggest thing I, I saw before COVID hit is the people that was trying to be very energy efficient, those make-up airs have economizers on them. And this is your money-saving piece of an economizer. In the spring and the fall in Kentucky, take advantage of those cool mornings, cooler mornings, or take advantage of some heat, whatever you need to warm up or cool down that building, you can pull in that outside air at those, those times of the year and not run your system so hard. And that's, that's, that is a money-saving advantage to a make-up air unit when it's running correctly. That, that's the key, though, when it's running correctly, because nobody gives the make-up air unit a lot of attention, reason being, because it doesn't necessarily dictate if this room is cool or hot. This room is being fed from a water source heat pump, well, I'm not sure what this building is, but it's Russell Springs, it's going to be fed from a water source heat pump. So nobody gets excited when the make-up air units are not, are not running necessarily. So they, the attention kind of gets lax on those a little bit. Now, some of your make-up airs over there feed the gymnasiums also, but they're also fed from water source heat pumps. So they can affect that a little bit more. So my point is, on the COVID thing, if your economizers are working the way they should be working, you're getting more fresh air, more fresh air in the building, which also helps fight that CO2 not getting so hot, and it's just better fresh air and better body air, trying to fight against those things. So that is a big piece to that. This quote, again, I've got a quote, so what I am proposing is not to replace all six make-up air units. I am quoting that you will rebuild five of those make-up air units, okay? And the reason is, again, these units, the bones of the units are in really, really good shape, meaning the cabinets, the doors, the structure, really good shape. What I am proposing to do is that you replace the refrigerant circuit, which is, again, R22, get away from that hot, that high R22 system, go in with 407 or 410. We'll change the compressors out. So basically, anything that has to do with the refrigeration on these make-up airs, we're, I'm proposing in this letterhead here... I'm proposing in this letterhead here to change that out, okay? Also proposing to change out the energy wheels. So if you, and that's probably where I should have showed you this picture. And these make-up air units, there's this big, you can just envision a big piece of pipe, that's what an energy wheel is, and it comes in sections, it's taller than me, it's, you know, it's as wide as I can put out there. And that thing turns constantly. You got outside air coming in, supply air going down, and it takes that, those wheels take that, take the air, transfer energy for you, which gives you energy savings. You don't have to get you, you don't have to get that from the compressor or anything else. That wheel, when it's clean and when it's good, it's basically turning and it helps you save energy, it helps you take that outside air, put that down there and help cool classroom if need be. So again, those things, they get put in these schools, but I don't really think, we probably don't pay a lot of attention to them, but they are, they can be vital if they're ran right and, and, you know, monitored right. But again, I want to, I want to re-say, I've been rebuilding them instead of replacing them. If we would have replaced them, it'd been way, way, been double the cost, okay? But I've been through every unit over there, I've got pictures of every unit, you don't need to replace them, you just need to rebuild them and then you need to get them working properly.
He and Mr. Thomas in working this proposal up has spent a lot of time at Russell Springs.
Yes, yes. And again, it's, it's really, those make-up airs, like I said, it's, it's just a matter, they don't need to be jerked out of there and put new in, they just need to be rebuilt, they need to be, just brought up to par, and that can be done with, with that cabinet and what they have in place. The blower wheels are good, supply return, the big blower sections, those are good, they don't need to be replaced. Like I said, it's mainly the refrigeration circuits, the enthalpy wheels, which is the energy saving wheels. And it's all in, in my quote here. Also, I am proposing to replace the coils over there, okay, with an epoxy coated coil, meaning you won't get the erosion and things of that, that nature as bad as you would on any of average coil. So, and that's kind of a standard that there, things going now, they go that epoxy coating is better light and it's more sturdy.
So the 1.1 million and change with it and adding, what's a good terminology for that? Classroom return filters or what, what exactly, for, because I would be adding that in my motion, would that be called?
Yeah, classroom return.
Okay, okay. So that's the, again, $18,774.67. And that encompasses this whole project, and again, we can use ESSR funds for it. And we have, we've got plenty of ESSR funds still, yeah. No impact to general fund, no impact to our bonding capacity. And then Mr. Jeremy is, you know, we, we trust him and he's worked with Russell County Schools for, for, like he said, a long time and very, very familiar with their schools. I'm very, very comfortable with the project and his company's work. And frankly, his work, because he's always a phone call away, very, very responsive.
Yeah, I live in Lake County, I'm not too far away. I'm less than an hour away. If I ever get my house built, but, but, but one more thing, on the, those make-up airs, the parts for that, for those is the same as the heat pumps. We'd have that material by October.
Okay.
And, and then the labor, the warranty's a little different on those though. Two years on those parts, it's not five years like the water source heat pumps, two years on the make-up air parts. It does come with a one-year labor warranty also, also comes with a one-year PM, a one-year PM included on all make-up air units as well.
So they would come in?
Replace the heat core to them?
Yes, that's correct.
On that PM, you all would come in and do all that maintenance type of stuff?
Yes.
For that year period?
Yep.
So what would your recommendation?
Teach some, teach some about that, just how to do it.
Yes, yeah. Mr. Wicker asks, my recommendation would be approval, I recommend approval of the HVAC project for Russell Springs Elementary School with thermal service, adding the classroom return filters and authorize Superintendent Ford to complete the BG1.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say that.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jeremy, I'll get those forms signed and send off to you and we'll start that work.
Perfect, thank you guys so much. I have a card, I want a card before I leave, just if you need anything. Yeah, it should all be on there. Okay, perfect, thank you guys for your time and the course are you guys?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Okay, next, a discussion with possible actions, oh, that's the last one. Bleacher Stadium, school board for new athletic facility.
So this is a name that is not unfamiliar to Russell County Schools, Mr. Todebahn, he's been with us for several years and has most recently done our bleachers at, in the gymnasium at high school. So he is going to talk to us some options about the new stadium and that project and school board options. And this is pretty time-sensitive because he needs to get this approved. This is one, how we want to go with it.
No, because I didn't get it until today, but I will.
There's no recommended, recommended motion because he was still working stuff up and I did not have to bring to me, but he's, he's got it all here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It has to be ordered now, doesn't it, Mr. Dug?
Very soon.
Yeah. Mr. Hoover there, Josh and Tony, you really like that person?
I'll have more to pass out to y'all here in just a second, but wanted to get you to know.
Mr. Todebahn, Mr. Hoover's our board attorney, but he also owns the local radio station.
Oh, yeah?
That will be broadcasting out of that booth that we talked about.
So I know who I'm talking to, I guess?
Yes.
Did your dad start the company, Chris?
My father did. I was gonna, I'll give you, I've got that slated here for a little company history, so we'll, first of all, thank you for being here, my name's Chris Todebahn, thank you for having me, okay? As this board said, we've been working with you guys for many years, between softball bleachers, we've done your indoor gym bleachers, many, many moons ago, my father sold your existing football stadium that you have currently. So, been highly involved with you guys over the years. Here's the kind of layout that we, that we are working through right now on your facility. We'll come back to that, get to some details here shortly. I want to also say this, if you have any questions at any time, just throw them out, okay? So this is trying to be as informative as possible if I go too fast, okay? Today, I just want to introduce you to who we are, or reintroduction to who we are, kind of go through our manufacturer portfolio, show you some highlighted, highlighted projects that we've based your project on and to give you ideas of what's possible and what's gonna happen with your stadium, if you can kind of see some, see the current projects in play to help, help you visualize that. And primarily, we're talking outdoor grandstands today, like I said. So a brief company history, my father started Todebahn Enterprises in 1980. He's been working with Dan Clayton, who's our advanced stadium manufacturer, he and his brother started that in the mid-'70s, which is about the time I was born, and my favorite joke that everybody's heard many times is that there's no child labor laws in the Todebahn House. So I've been involved in some fashion or another since about '83, as long as, I was old enough to carry a board or turn a, turn a ranch, I was involved somehow with my father in this business, as is my brother back here in the back. Located in, just outside of Louisville, in Fisherville. In 2001, we started our installation and service company, Vine and Branch LLC, we branched off of Todebahn. That's more or less my brother and I legitimizing our summer jobs for as long as we can remember and making an actual business. So, our service geography is Kentucky, Tennessee, Indiana, Ohio, and just recently, the last year, Iowa Air Mountain, Mississippi. Products and services we roll through is, are outdoor grandstands, indoor telescopic, like we mentioned, gymnasium equipment, outdoor athletic equipment, scoreboards and video, and then we maintain it for you with parts and service, okay? What sets us apart is we're a total solution provider. We work with consulting, like I have Mr. Ford so far, we have design-ins, that's where we are today, we project manage it, we'll install it in-house, and then we'll help you maintain it over the years. So we kind of soup the nuts, one throat to choke, provider, okay? Quickly, our manufacturer portfolio, Dan Clayton out of Louisville, Kentucky is where it's manufactured. Indoor telescopic bleachers, intercouch, gymnasium equipment, porter athletics. Their sister company, Gil Athletics, is outdoor athletic equipment, which I've been talking with you guys about as far as your track and field equipment, that's something else we can provide for you. Scoreboards and video, we have watch fire video and scoreboards, and then of course, Vine and Branch is our maintenance, parts, service. Okay, so a few project portfolios, here locally that you've probably familiar with, Barron County High School, that's a project we did a few years ago and real proud of it. Have the same type chairs that we proposed on yours, VIP seating there, they have a gray powder coat that we'll get into in a minute to kind of help set that off, that's a logo you've probably seen. Graves County High School, I want to bring this one up because this job in Ballard High School, which you'll see next, is loosely what your all's stadium is based on, okay? Underneath, this is kind of what it looks like underneath it, but then you have this pass-through on that right side that we talked about where the team runs out with smoke and fireworks and all, all the stuff and on a great game day atmosphere.
The teams have wanted that for year, but, for years, but it would take altering the existing structure, you know, on our current stadium, which...
So to give you an idea what that recently looks like from the front view, this is Ballard High School in Louisville, Kentucky. Again, you see in the middle there where they, they come running through the back, from the backside of the stand and onto the field. Okay, we just installed this one a couple of years ago up in Louisville. Jeffersonville High School, Jeffersonville, Indiana, is a recent one we installed as well. I've had this picture here because I wanted you to see the canopy on top of the press box, as well as different color ideas that you can be thinking about. But we put canopies on top of our press boxes so you can film the shade. We're out of rain. Another canopy idea, this is Myland High School in Myland, Tennessee, a great-looking project. On the backside of this, which Ford and I were discussing, the option to, if you wanted to close off the underside of the grandstand with some sight fence, and we could put some logos, screen print on that so you can, you know, it helps you direct traffic.
Yeah, and it's, that'd be walking up to this stadium, you know, from where it's gonna be positioned, so something like that's gonna be kind of important, I think, because of the proximity of how we'll be entering the field.
So... And finally, drink rail. You all have your rear walkway, okay, at the back, at the very top of your grandstand where you're gonna walk in and out of your press box. What we have included is this, what we call a drink rail. Normally, there's just a regular rail there and a lot of people have a tendency to, this is a lot the best seat of the house, where you have to the very top looking down. So there's a spot there to where, you know, you can set your drink or you can keep score or you can do whatever you need to do, play cards, poker, bet on the games, whatever you all want to do. So, I want to get a little bit to the weeds on the outdoor grandstands as far as what you are all getting, so you understand fully what that is as far as products, okay? Welded deck, welded aluminum deck walk surface is what you have, all right? You're gonna be way up in the air, like 30, 40 feet in the air, okay? Aluminum has a tendency to deflect when you walk on it, you may notice that already in your current stadium, if you get up a little bit, it's, it kind of has a little bounce to it. What we do, we weld each one of those seams, so it's like walking on concrete. You have no idea other than maybe a little bit of the sound, there's no deflection in your walk surface, okay? Secondly, we have a slip and stain resistant finish, okay? Aluminum will have a tendency to oxidize, okay? And there's nothing like, no one likes to have a brand new stadium and have black splotches all over it because aluminum's gonna oxidize and it's gonna take it about a year to even itself out and have that oxidation disappear and it's black and it just looks awful, it's a black stain. So we have a stain resist, stain resistant surface on that, on our, on our stadium. We've done that most recently at Bowling Green High School, which is pretty close to you guys as well as Ballard, okay? If you want to go kick the tires on that, we'd be happy to set that up for you, okay? That's included in what we've done for you as well. Another nice thing about that, it takes down some of the mirror shine. If you walk around your stadium now, it's kind of like walking on a mirror, you've got a lot of glare, it doubles it out and helps get rid of that for you, okay? Seat types, we have flip-up chairs as an option, but what Mr. Ford and I were discussing is the fixed chairs, like this rest one here, I got a sample back here as well, if you've been to your softball field, you've probably sat in one, okay? It was the exact same chair, thank you, Vanna.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that keeps us in what our budget?
Absolutely.
That we initially approved with the BG1?
Yes.
Keeping that type of chair, which is still a wonderful chair, very comfortable.
Yes, same thing that Barron County asked, so, the aluminum benches are where you'll be everywhere else. Go ahead, any questions?
No, Ms. Wicker had asked how many for those. Those will be the, like, the ones to sell?
Right, those are gonna be, I'm gonna have some drawings to show you here in a second, I want to keep your attention captive because usually when I get some in front of me, I go ADD and start looking at it. So I'm gonna have a drawing here for you in just a second to show you. And right now, we've got 216 of those with the option for more, okay? Anyway, so seat type, everywhere else besides the center section will be the aluminum benches, our aluminum, we have a rounded front nose, which is a little more comfortable to sit on, you don't have that hard edge underneath your legs, okay? And then a sturdy closure panel. What we have proposed is the, on the right there, the powder coated riser that matches the rest of your stand, or you can bring in that secondary color that you all have, whether it's red or navy, and then we, we can pull in separate colors for you and help give you a better, a better school pride on your, on your stadium with the color. That's included as well on the right side there, the riser, the riser panels that go down to gray. And then railing options, the black vinyl chain link vents around all the guard rails. We do have a picket rail, which is not into the budget, but just so you understand that we have the white vinyl chain link to all guard rails, keeping you from walking off the bleachers. Because I, I consider this too, I don't want to read through every bit of detail, but our service and maintenance and everything we do for you guys after the fact over the years, this is a product that we provide for you guys as well, okay? Warranties, you have five-year warranty on the structure, three-year warranty on your finish, and then one-year warranty on your press box, okay? Then here's, can we pass out those drawings, please? So far, I know I kind of, I feel like I ran through that pretty fast. Any questions so far with anything I've already covered?
Are you gonna talk later about the refinishing of the existing?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I saw one from Mayfield, was it damaged?
In the windstorm years ago? It's from the very next year. Not recently, no. No, we installed that actually back in the year, I want to say maybe 2007 or '08, when we originally installed that. The next year, they had some flatline winds, they were building a fieldhouse next to it, ripped that roof off, hit the top corner, didn't really destroy the bleachers, messed up some of the finish, but the tornado that came through now had no effect on it at all. I don't want to say it's a tornado, because that would get you in trouble.
You're being recorded too.
Right, right. Is anybody else need, no? Okay, I'm gonna take one of these just about.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
It may have been about five, five springs back, but kind of like I said, but it's got sturdy, you know, like a lot of times bleachers will have open areas where like lady-sick persons or children can fall through, all that's sturdy underneath, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question.
Yeah, that's all code now, that has to be done.
I just knew we, we kind of, we had concerns with some time tonight.
That's a great question. And this is a picture of a sample with a cut through, okay? Like I said, we weld every one of these seams here, okay? And then, as you can see right here, the risers, the riser plate, which y'all don't have on your current bleacher, and we'll talk about your current bleacher here in just a second, but this actually hooks into the front nose of the, of the footboard above it, comes down and overlaps the backside of the footboard below it, okay? And then these seat brackets actually go on top of that, and there's a bolt that comes through there, okay? So it's locked in here, it's locked in here, it's locked in with the clips, we call it a triple lock system. So, no water will go through this at all, except for maybe at a couple of slot splice points, you might get some drips. The whole system slopes 1% forward, it's no one can feel, but it's enough to get that water moving forward, okay? And then we have weep holes underneath the very front row, underneath the handicap section, in some of the boxes in that first row. We have weed holes, there's no water to drain through. So you can't drop your phone, you can't put a pencil through, you can't, there's no way you can do that. Great question.
It's like if you spill a drink or anything like that, that would go down, too.
That's not, that's not going to go underneath, it's going to just continue to roll down or sit under your feet, okay? So, yeah, nothing can go through this stadium at all.
Mr. Gratter's son played ball, but he's also our head school resource officer, so he thinks about all that stuff.
So you're dealing with people under the bleachers all the time, aren't you?
Lot of action.
Lot of action.
So in front of you, you see the layout that we proposed, okay? You see the cut through in the middle here, okay? Where the team would run out. The reason we have, and you see on either side, you have two ramps that bring you back underneath, like that picture of Graves County that I showed you, okay? You have to have two ramps because in order to have enough ADA seating to meet code, you're going to have to have ADA seating on either side of that pass through, so you need two ramps, one on each end. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay? But what we've done here is, we've tried to help direct traffic flow, people traffic flow, to where you want them to go, okay? These ramps are modular, and I can reroute them out to side, or I can move them just about anywhere, but most of the time, people want to come underneath, it starts raining or thunderstorm to get underneath or something like that, okay? That's something we can look at.
As soon as you said that, did you all hear that thunder?
I heard that.
I've got them teed up, listen.
Oh, wow. You all are on cue.
Bring the sound effects.
So, in the middle, as you can see, we have a different rise, run spacing. When I say rise and run, it's like when you're walking up a stair, is your rise, okay, and your run, or your tread depth, okay? In order to have a chair back, there's minimums that we have to meet in order to have spacing to, for safety and for code to get in and out, okay? So, what we have done with this design, here are 14 inches per row tall, okay, by 24 inches deep at your bench seats. Well, we, and that's a one to, that is a, well, it's not a one to two, so, but it's close. But normally, it's 12, we've gone to 14 here. In this case, we've changed your rise run in the middle to match that same pitch, so you actually have a 21 inch rise between rows, and you have a 36 inch deep tread depth at your VIP seats. So what that does is, these seats are premium seats for you, right? So you're going to get up really tall and be able to see, you don't have to look at the back of somebody's head, okay? It's going to be great seats, you're going to look out, you have a real stadium effect, looking out over top of, watching the field, or watching whatever games are going on, band or movies, or whatever you want to do, okay? Questions on that so far? The rest of the pictures there, more or less show foundation layouts and side views and a press box through section. What we've also included for you in the pricing in this press box, we talked about having four rooms, you've got a rooftop filming platform, you've got a couple of HVAC systems that will duct into the middle rooms, okay? Right here, okay, that's what those show, okay? So these are four rooms, you enter into the sides here, in here, okay? There's HVAC, of course, it's heated and cooled, the same type of, it's like a hotel room, which you want to see, like this other one, okay? We have pre-wired for you for audio visuals, we're ready to go for, you know, if you have video cameras and what have you, that's all ready to go. And we have a rooftop filming platform without a cover at this point, that's an add option that we're talking about, Mr. Ford and I talked about, okay? So can we get the, can we get the quotes passed out, please?
Because this is just on one side, that we just have this regular bleachers on the other side.
Well, Mr. Tobin's going to talk about that, but our existing bleachers, he can bring them up to code.
And put them on the...
Section on the other side, and also Coach Rexro would like some over there in baseball.
Good.
He said by the time they're done cleaning them, and he could put them next to the new ones, and you won't know it. But it'll also bring it up to code, like the stuff. They're okay once they sit there, but we can't move them without bringing them up to code, so...
Right. So what we have proposed, and the numbers we have included, y'all mentioned we need about 300 seats on the visitor side, okay? And then, we talked about the space you have on the baseball, on both third and first base. In your football stadium, I can put all three of those in that one stadium, okay? So the price that you have in front of you includes us dissembling those, reworking those, and putting them in place at visitor football, at baseball, third and first base, okay? So, that also includes a riser skirt below it, like we talked about. Right now, you don't have any king plates or risers on your bleacher, that includes, that's included as well. Powder coated in your school colors as well, okay? Your footboards will stay the same, because they're already there. I'm going to reuse everything I possibly can, so I'm adding risers, I'm adding new black vinyl chain link fence, I'm adding new rails where I need to, because I'm cutting a big long bleacher into three sections, so I'm going to have to add some rails on the new sections, okay? I've got your ramp and stairs for egress, and I have your handicap seats cut in, okay? That's all included with everything I've handed out to you.
And that's covered everything, or...
Everything is included, okay? The only thing that I have in there right now as an add is, if you want to put a filming platform cover on top of your press box. The price I have in there, I think it's, put in there $45,000, if you want to add the entire section. The picture I showed you, an option, that would be less expensive, because we're not covering the entire top, okay? So I wanted you all to have an option, that's why Mr. Ford was like, well, there's a couple things that we need to iron out still, and you decide that, and I can put it together, and we'd be ready to go, okay?
Just being blunt, it would not be my recommendation at this time to include that roof canopy, because we're going to run on such a tight budget as it is. That's something we can add later. Mr. Jonathan, I'm sure would probably agree with that on, as far as budget goes, because we need all of our dollars. I mean, we're going to have a big scope of this, right? I mean, you know, the football stadium, the track, all the grade work, we want to incorporate, like Mr. Murray mentioned, and you all, several of you had, the new tennis courts, so, you know, if we can, you know, my recommendation would be not to include that right now, because...
All in live, you have to do it.
Pardon me?
All in live.
Yes, yeah. So we've got a big project scope as it is, with a very tight budget as it is, so...
Do they have the picture, the video, or the visitor side, do they have that as well? Yeah.
And while he's getting that, we had budgeted in the BG-1 at 1.6 million for the bleacher stadium and all this, what Mr. Tobin's presented, and he's got it, his estimate is 1.569,425,000, so that's coming in, you know, great.
Once again...
That includes your work on the visitor.
Absolute, absolute, that includes the work on the visitor as well, okay? This is what the visitor will be, this is 45 feet long, it seats 300, you've got an existing 15 row elevated stand now, that's what this is. When I say elevated, meaning you've got to have a ramp or stairs to get to it, okay? So that's what you have out there. So I'm taking this long bleacher, and I'm cutting it down into three sections, and I'm adding a ramp, platform, and a couple of stairs on each side, okay? Now my question would be, because, I'm trying to think, when you, when you finally lay out, when y'all do final layout on your baseball, I have one of these assumed at first and third base. You might be able to save a nickel or two if you don't put a ramp up and you have ADA only on one side, but then I don't know how you do home and visitor, if you want to keep that or not. That's, that will be a question that y'all could think through.
Yeah.
But outside of that, you've got this included at all three locations right now, okay? And I can move this ramp to this side or this side, depending on which way traffic comes in and what have you.
So I really liked the idea and appreciate the idea of us being able to reuse, but brought up to code, and they clean them and shine them up, and they look really great.
You're saving at least 40% on something, buying all these things now, back into that, okay?
And it also frees up a lot of space...
Yes, sir.
Where the existing bleacher pad is, so...
Okay?
Yeah.
These bleachers would need to be on concrete, I don't have any concrete or site work included in my price, you'll see.
No, that's, but that's included, and that's part of the drilling that we've been doing this week.
So what we do include is, we will include the foundation design, because we need to design what the foundations look like to support our structure. We have all that included, we have all, we have Kentucky engineer stamp included, okay? It is on the price contract, local state contract, so it's all included on that. What we don't have included are architectural fees, if required, okay? We have, it's like, we don't have tax included, because right now, it's written as if you would buy the materials direct from Tobin, and you'd buy the installation from Vining Branch, so that saves the use tax, like we would do on any other project.
Yeah, we'll do direct purchase order, yeah.
Right, okay? So you're still dealing with one guy, me, on both sides of that, okay? Outside of that, really, that's about it, that's about it, so... Any other questions? I know I kind of gave you more information.
You'll be at KSVA next weekend?
Probably.
I'll be there.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Is that the one?
Marriott here.
Marriott.
I got to go back and book in my calendar, because I know it is.
You usually are.
I know, I know. So, any other questions at this point?
I got my seat picked here.
Oh, she's already picked out her seat, Chris.
You've already picked out your seat?
You put her name on it.
Well, I'll tell you, that's something we can do, we can get you a chair, we can put nameplates on them, things like that, we've talked about how to fundraise for them.
When he noted that the space for more, right now, just because of cost, that lower part can be the, what do you call that, just flat bleacher area can be taken up, and seats can be installed later, yeah.
You got two extra rows, so you can add another 50 to 70 seats, if you'd like, okay? By taking up those two rows and adding chairs. It's built for future add, if you want to, okay?
And this will, we had to think about, and we talked with Chris about this, we had to think about football games, but we also wanted to think about accommodating for our band competitions, and, because that's a big crowd, you know? And so, so we're excited about all that. And of course, soccer, everything will be out there, so...
And I have to tell you that obviously people, you know, you can sell the VIP seats, it's a revenue builder, okay? I know that, we're not talking about video boards today, because Mr. Ford said he's not sure it's in the budget. If and when that time comes, we can talk about it, but that's another opportunity to make, to raise money and be as a revenue builder. So, we put name tags on there as well, if you want to sell seat licenses and things like that, as creative as you want to be, we're here to help you do that, okay? So, any other questions at this point?
So I recommend approval of the bleacher and stadium proposal with Tobin Enterprises as presented, and Mr. Jonathan, did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, I went through the design and location, and Doug has incorporated his foundation design in his overall site plan, so we know where these bleachers are going to sit, and Chris provided his foundation with Doug, and he's laid that into the site plan, so we know it fits, it fits around the draft, all of that is laid out to where it's going to work.
We all met, and then Chris and I have been emailing back and forth several times on looking at different options, but we all met again, well, now that's been longer than probably what I realized, but 30, 4 weeks probably now, when we met onsite and went through it all again, before he started working up some proposals, so I feel, pardon me?
They want it.
Well, he has to order it, he needs a, he's going to be hard on me to get that purchase order ASAP, if you all approve it, to get it for next fall, for when we're ready to start this.
To give you an idea of what the pandemic, what the, what our current situation is doing for us, under normal circumstances, or normal years before 2020, I could take an order about six months prior to your season and have no problem getting it installed. And as you've probably heard, with everybody that comes in, we're playing whack-a-mole every day, with what's, what's being delayed, what's this. This past year, people were ordering, I've got people to start ordering in October just to meet a July deadline, and some of them aren't even hitting that because of where it got in line. So we're pulling it up, like, we need a year in advance to make sure we have no, we have no issues meeting the first game. We want to be, we want to have excitement in your, in your county, we want people picking out their seats ahead of time, so we could be in June of next year is where we're trying to hit. So we've got plenty of time for weather, or whatever crazy things we can't predict between now and then, so that's why we're asking to try to have this ordered this month, to go and get in line for next year, okay?
Again, I'll just, I'm sorry.
I'll make that one.
Okay.
I'll say it. I don't want to...
Troy second, okay? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're not vague, we're going to give America money to make it here, maybe.
Mr. Tobin does know that we have the name for the press box, but he did recommend that we get those letters outside of him.
Correct.
Because of just added cost.
My manufacturer will buy them from somewhere else and mark it up, and then I, of course, got to mark it up, so if you have local sign companies that you're already dealing with, I'm sure that you've talked about...
So that we've talked about, that we'll get, and then they'll put on...
So it would be a better savings to you and project budget to have whatever you'd like on the front end.
Yeah, because we previously, Mr....
Right.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you all again, thank you. Yep. Let me ask Mr. Tobin a question. Do you need anything beyond a PO? No, you'll need one directly, we'll need to split that, hold on, I mean...
I will send you a breakout...
Okay, there you go.
This week, just, once we have this part done, and then we'll, we'll have everything wrapped up by a little next week.
All right, sounds good, thanks, sir.
Now, one thing we will have to go through is in this middle process, you're going to choose your colors, I don't need to know colors today, okay? But we will go through that process. You have up to three to choose from, three total colors, and we had at least two, so things like your steel underneath, your risers, your skirt, those are all, please, and I'll have this played out, so we'll, for Mr. Ford, and we'll have all that to you in this middle, okay? And we'll go through that process.
No, Mam always said, "That's what it was, he adjusted to these." The powers out.
Really?
Yep. Code would be in the field. The powers are.
He had a meeting.
Yeah, he had a meeting, he took...
That's bad.
Ready to go to the next one, yes.
Correction, FY-23 pledge of collateral agreement for public school funds.
So I had inadvertently attached the wrong supplemental information to the last, the collateral agreement with First National Bank. It's in the same amount with First National Bank of 16,410,000, and it's with the same amount with the same bank, First National Bank, but their agreement form and their bank that they had used as part of their collateral was, was different than the one I attached, and that was my mistake, I attached the wrong one. So this is the, I didn't want to have that and not bring that to y'all's attention, so I'm just bringing this back to you all for your approval with the correct attachment. So I recommend approval of the corrected fiscal year 23 pledge of collateral agreement for public school funds, an amount of 16,410,000 for our accounts at First National Bank, supplemented by Brenda Hickenbottom.
I'll make a motion for that.
Thank you.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Thank you all.
He's taking his chair with him. How rude is that? Amendment to, to, oh, 22, 2023 district staffing and SPDM allocation policy.
So two things that this would do, the proposed amendment would provide for Jamestown Salem Elementary School from the split position of the assistant principal to each, each school, Jamestown and Salem, having an assistant principal paid with the ESRA funds, and then once those funds are, are gone in two years, at the end of the 22, 23, 24 school year, we would reevaluate that and see where we stood. We have another, another budget cycle with the state, so we don't know how that would go, you know, good or negative, but we would, we would need to reevaluate that in two years. But in the meantime, it would be a great advantage to both schools to have a full-time assistant principal. I know Mrs. Blankenship's here, and you may want to, to speak to that. And in addition to that, it, it changes that other custodian at Salem from, to the 240 position as well. But I recommend the approval of the amended staffing formula, SBDM allocations, and the staffing allocation policy for 22, 23 school year, and that the formula becomes part of the minute. So we had the position posted for the split position, they'd actually done interviews, had some more conversations, so that is on pause. If you all approve this, then we would post a position for Jamestown and Salem, and they would take applications again.
You wouldn't be happy, would you? I'll make a motion. Be happy about that.
Yes, I'll say that.
Ms. Brenda Maden?
Yes.
Okay. Their motion, we're saying, we're quick to get out here. COVID brought a little money. Mr. Murray?
We vote yes.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.